All right, good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for January 24th, 2018. Thank you all for attending. There are no minutes to address, so we're going to jump right into our public hearing items, a continuation from our previous meeting on January 10th. Okay, we'll try and speak up for you. And there was a request for the commissioners to speak louder and clearly towards the audience so people could hear better. Again, we're continuing our public hearing item from January 10th, 2018, the petition of Danny Tyree for a conditional use permit at 1,002 Wood Road and 8129 Timberlake Road to allow the construction of a 43-unit townhouse development in an R3 medium-density residential and B3 community business district.
Chair, Vice Chair, I'll keep my comments somewhat briefer than last time, but this is a continuation of the public hearing due to a notification error to Campbell County. Campbell County was notified, as well as the petition was re-advertised in the paper, and comments have been received back from Campbell County which were included in the information that's sent to the commission. Essentially what Campbell County said back to the City of Lynchburg is, obviously, as it is to the city, traffic concerns are very important to them, yet the county trusts that the city will continue to weigh these concerns in a manner that best reflects the needs and priorities of the jurisdiction. So this petition is proposing 43 townhomes. It's currently zoned R3, medium-density residential and B3 community business district. Townhome developments are permitted by conditional use permit in both of the R3 and B3 districts. The petition at 43 units is right at 9.64 units per acre, which is below the 10.89 dwelling units per acre that's permitted in the R3 district and below the 12 units per acre that is recommended in the medium-density residential as proposed on the city's future land use map. As mentioned last time, a traffic study was not required by the city's transportation engineer, as the project would generate less than the 50 peak hour and 500 daily trips that would require a traffic study. Obviously, traffic impact is a big concern. As you heard last time, and I'm sure you'll hear today, the Virginia Department of Transportation is conducting a traffic study of the Timberlake Road corridor, and an email from Mr. Rick Youngblood at the Virginia Department of Transportation indicated that a draft study has been done. They have not released it to us yet, but his review of that draft study indicated that the median at Wood Road would not be closed. So that is different than what was relayed to the commission at the last meeting. We were under the assumption that BDOT was going to recommend that that median be closed. We're being told now that the draft study does not recommend that be closed. Also, since last time, the city's transportation engineer has weighed in a little bit more, and although it is not required, as we talked about last time, the road width of Wood Road is very narrow, approximately 18 feet. While it's not a requirement, he is recommending that Wood Road be widened to 30 feet from the entrance of the proposed development to Timberlake Road.
Who is he?
Don DeBerry, the city's transportation engineer. So again, while the site is recommended for higher densities on the city's future land use map, it is reasonable for the proposed townhome development due to the close proximity to commercial areas, which would make the density accessible to goods and services. And while these goods and services are in the immediate area, it's going to be very difficult to access those services and goods without an automobile. The planning division recommended approval last time, and that recommendation does still stand.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to add anything to their presentation from the previous meeting?
Yes, sir. My name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins-Norsen. The acting chair asked me to pretty much go over the presentation, since several of members of the planning commission were not in attendance last time, and so I'd like to do that. As Tom mentioned, we are asking for the CUP to allow townhouses to be built on this property. We are less than the allowable density per the zoning ordinance, as well as the future land use map. The density is, the decrease in density is due to a better product, a more spacious product. The end units are 24-foot in width, where the middle units are 20-foot in width. I believe the zoning ordinance allows down to 18-foot widths on townhouses. The architectural facade on these units will be a mixture of different architectural elements. They will have a Craftsman-style look to them. There are some in Cornerstone and Braxton Park and other projects that have a similar look to these projects. The units will be anticipated to market just under $200,000. This is not intended to be a student housing project. These are townhomes for sale. The developer will build these and then sell the individual units to independent owners. As Tom mentioned, the project size was not large enough to generate a traffic study. The information that Tom mentioned from, or Mr. Martin, excuse me, Tom, from Mr. Martin was new to us as of today, far as the requirement of improvements to Woods Road from the entrance to Timberlake Road. We have not had an opportunity to evaluate that as far as an economic impact to this project. We looked at it briefly today. It appears that from the entrance of the convenience store is where the roadway starts to narrow in, narrow within 30 feet back to this entrance, which is roughly about 450 feet by my measurements today. So 450 feet of roadway, depending on the road design, could be in excess of $100,000 of construction. So we are trying to evaluate that to see how that impacts this project. We'd like to have more conversation with staff regarding that. We understand this is a very nice and quiet neighborhood. We do not want to be a bother or burden to this neighborhood. This is a very passionate neighborhood. You can see by the folks that are here today, they are a very close-knit community, and we understand that. We believe that this development provides a transition from commercial to single-family residential. There's commercial, obviously, along Timberlake Road, and this provides a planning transition to the single-family detached. We did have a neighborhood information meeting on Monday, January 8th, where several of the property owners that are here were in attendance to that meeting, as well as the first public hearing earlier this month. From the information, neighborhood information meeting, several items were brought up that we are considering. One is additional screening. The other is security during construction, containment of trash during construction, traffic both during construction and after the ultimate development. And there were some questions about the necessity of another townhouse project in this area. To address some of these issues, Mr. Tyree, who is the developer of this project, will also be the contractor building these units, so he will be onsite and there to provide verification of security and trash pickup or whatnot during construction. So he also grew up in this community, so he knows a lot of these people. So I think he will be at the forefront, trying to take care of his neighbors. We believe that this is the right project at the right time. There was one townhouse project in Campbell County that just was denied by the Board of Supervisors. We are unaware of any other townhouse projects along to Timberlake Road corridor, but the projects that have been completed in the recent past have developed and sold out relatively quickly. They haven't stayed on the market. There's not a lot of for-sale signs in front of the townhouses in Cornerstone or other developments, so this is a product that's moving quickly now. We believe that townhouses are really the starter home for a lot of young professionals. They provide an inexpensive means to own a house, and they're low maintenance, in which in the lower 20s age bracket, that seems to be appealing in both aspects. We did two layouts that we would like to share. Is it any way that I could show these on screen? I have them here. To help you understand what the possible impacts to the community could be. What you see before you here is a townhouse development consistent of 50 units. This would be pretty much the ultimate build-out of the property. Actually, after we drew this, we went back and checked the zoning ordinance, and we can only allow 49 units, so this is one unit in error, but this would give you an idea of what the density of this project would look like if we maximized out the property. Obviously, basically, what we're showing now with the proposal in front of you is this roadway and these units, and these are not included in the proposal before you. This area here on our plan now is used for stormwater management, as well as a buffer area, undeveloped area. This would still require CUP, obviously, since it's townhouses. This plan here is by right. These are all duplexes in what is now the R3 portion of the property. This is two buildings that are commercial or office space on the first floor, and two stories of residential apartments above, which is by right for B3. Obviously, there would be a roadway that would need to be constructed and parking. With this project, the recommendation by traffic would be a recommendation in the site plan. It would not necessarily be a requirement to improve Wood Road from the entrance back to Timberlake. I think it would probably be addressed similarly as a recommendation, but not a requirement. But this can be done without any action from planning commission or city council. We feel that the project that we have before you now is less intrusive, more neighborhood-friendly, and provides, basically, a continuation of the community, where this, we feel like, could be an intrusion more so than the project that we've shown now. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have, either now or through your deliberation.
Great, thank you. We may be calling you back up in a bit. As we start the true public participation part of this meeting, I just want to remind folks that we do have a few rules. They are laid out in the agenda with hard copies available, the primary ones being time limits of three minutes by individuals that we'll be enforcing. And if, we are welcoming input from everyone, but the guidelines do suggest that if you are just repeating what someone else earlier has said, we just kind of get a feel for the general trend from the room. And we did receive several emails and letters, and all of the commissioners have received those and have read them, and we do appreciate that input so far. So at this point, I would like to invite anyone from the public who is in favor of this petition. Yes, ma'am? If you could come on up and sign in and state your name, we would be happy to hear from
Okay, well, good afternoon. My name is Jane Cagger, and I reside at 739 Chinook Place in Lynchburg. I grew up on the property that we are discussing today, and it was really country then. I could even ride my horse on Timberlake Road. So I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of growth in this area. And this property is owned by my parents up until 2012, when my mom died. And at that time, my deceased brother's family and I inherited this property. In order to settle the estate promptly, I bought out their shares, since they lived out-of-state and out-of-country, so I'm the sole owner of this property. And I've tried to be a good neighbor since I've owned this property, because by keeping it mowed, I've kept the trash picked up, and I've allowed the neighbors to enjoy the property for, as they wished. And shortly after the annexation in 1976, which was my parents did not like, when from country, from farm to city, the parcels were rezoned, and they were rezoned, the R3 and the B3. And after I inherited, of course, we put it for sale. And having had much interest, there was a church interested, but that was contingent on them selling their present church. And then there was another person that wanted to purchase it and locate a landscaping business there. Well, after he found out it had to be rezoned, and he didn't want to go through the hassle and all the expense of that, so he backed out of that. So after six long years, we finally have a developer who is willing to purchase the property and develop it according to the city's requirements. And I know those who have been living on Wood Road have enjoyed the property like it is, but they've also known it's been zoned, this. And anybody that's moved there within the last six years have seen a for-sale sign-up with the zoning logo on it also. So it's not a surprise. I mean, I don't think anybody thought it was going to be like that forever. And this is property which I have no use for, but I've continued to maintain it, to pay liability insurance on it, and to pay the higher taxes due to the zoning. So I respectfully ask that you approve this project as proposed by Mr. Tyree, which meets all of your requirements for zoning and developing, and it will provide the type of housing that's needed in our city. And I appreciate that this proposal is below what the density level could be. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? As we switch over to opposition, we're going to invite anyone representing groups first. So for example, homeowners association, is there anyone representing a group who would like to speak against this petition? All right, we can switch over to individuals then. Yes, sir? If you can come on up and sign in, please. Tell us your name and address.
Sure, it's Tim Brown. I live at 1225 Wood Road, and I put some notes up so I don't go over time. A couple of things I want to bring up. I've lived in the neighborhood for about eight years. You guys had mentioned about widening the road from that project back to Timberlake Road. That is going to have absolutely no impact on the traffic that cuts through from Timberlake Road up to Mountain View and makes the left on to Mountain View to bypass Laxton Road Light. As mentioned at the last meeting, Asland Castle is actually building a 110-student daycare center at the corner of B Drive and Laxton Road, so you're going to have a lot more traffic that's going to try to cut through there to go around Laxton to pick up their kids. In addition, in widening that road, you're going to have to relocate water lines, sewer lines. In addition to that, you're going to have to relocate our drainage ditches, because the drainage ditches sit so close to the road right there. In relocating the drainage ditches, I want to know what the issues are with water runoff. I know that they're putting a pond out there to try to help with water runoff on the Timberlake roadside. This map is not topographical. That project is at the top of a hill. I have a French drain in my backyard and a sump pump, and I can tell you right now, at the bottom of that hill on the backside of Wood Road, we get a lot of standing water. I don't know anybody on that side, I know another house across the street, with a basement who's had flooding issues, just because of all of the construction. With them adding that much additional pavement, with the drainage ditches having to be moved, how is that going to affect us on the backside of that hill down Wood Road? Brought up the issue about the daycare center. Essentially, you're going to be having a lot more accidents on Laxton Road, and I know that doesn't affect us, but it does affect Campbell County, their public safety. You have kids, as mentioned in the last meeting, young drivers leaving Brookville. I watched a kid, because I can see B Drive from my backyard, peel out and fly up the street, you know, and if somebody was coming out of Mountain View, you know, he could very easily get hit. So just some things like that. Brookfield Athletics uses our neighborhood for their training. They run through our neighborhood. It was brought up, we have a lot of disabled people in our neighborhood. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood. On my end of the street, everybody has kids that's under the age of six, seven, that like to play in the street, a lot of bikes going up and down. How is that going to be affected? It was brought up that these are going to be sold. When I bought my house, there's a quarter acre next to me, they immediately built a townhouse on that piece of property and told me, "Don't worry, it's not a problem. Nobody's going to, this is going to be rental. We're building it to sell." They put it on the market, it was sold, it was immediately turned into rental property, and I've had some of the most horrible neighbors in that building since then. So I'm concerned about that, and I'll close with this. A lot of you guys are looking at this as a financial issue, okay? Who's going to make money? City's going to make money off of taxes. Developer's going to make money when they sell it. This is not about money to all of us. It's about quality of life. We don't care about the money. We don't care, you know, is this going to be good for, you know, for tax revenue? We just want to see our neighborhood maintain what it's got. I'm not saying nothing can be built on this property. I'm just saying that I think this particular project is not in the best interest of everyone. Because, yeah, right now in the short term, you might see some financial gain, they might see some financial gain, but what's it mean if somebody's car gets hit, somebody's kid gets hit because of all the increased traffic on these roads? Is that worth the extra money? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ann Farish. I purchased my home at 1,000 Wood Road 25 years ago, and I'm opposed to the townhome project for the following reasons. The townhomes will be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, where most of the homes are one-story ranch-style homes. 43 two-story townhomes will not blend well with the existing architecture. 10 years ago, we were here opposing 35 townhomes being built one block down Wood Road on six acres of land. City council agreed with us, and only single-family homes and two duplexes are allowed on that property. What has changed during that time to cause you to consider allowing 44 townhomes to be built on only four acres in the same neighborhood? The retention pond may not sufficiently catch all the runoff, and the water will go into neighboring yards and basements and businesses. The runoff water could contain petroleum byproducts that could harm pets and wildlife, as well as get into the waterways by way of the creek that runs across the lower end of that property. I've made a few observations also that I'd like to mention. How are density requirements being met when they are using only a small portion of the land and putting the maximum amount of townhomes? 44 townhomes allowed on four acres, but the drawing looks like only about three acres of that land is actually used for townhomes. The land was surveyed in 2011 by Perkins-Norsen, which is the same company that is engineering and presenting this proposal. When I questioned city planning about this, I was told that there is nothing unordinary having the same company do both the survey and the engineering drawings. The property line between townhomes and single-family homes must be clearly defined. If you see Item 2 and Section 35.1-56 in the city planning ordinance, it states that in all instances where a multifamily district is adjacent to a single-family residential district, there shall be a landscape setback between the two, and a vegetative buffer must be provided on all sides. The actual property line is in the center of the driveway, and half of the driveway belongs to the property at 1,000 Wood Road. I have a petition with over 150 signatures from people in the neighborhood opposing the construction of these townhomes, and I'll present it at the meeting with city council on February 13th. Earlier this week, Campbell County Planning Committee unanimously voted to deny the rezoning for 77 townhomes further down Timberlake Road, and we are hopeful that Lynchburg City Planning will follow their lead, allowing us to remain in our quiet, safe neighborhood that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else oppose? Yes, sir? Come on up, please.
Hello. My name is Clinton Hunter. I live at 1715 Danbury Drive. I don't actually live in the neighborhood, but I live right off of Laxton Road on the Lynchburg side. I drive through that intersection every day. My primary concern is the increase in traffic. And I know they've said that it's not going to be that many, 400 and something, but any additional increase in that intersection, we can't have. I mean, it's, that's one of the worst intersections in Lynchburg, in my opinion. I drive through there every day to work and home again. You can sit for 10 minutes trying to get through there. It's just, it's just not good. I also work for Campbell County Schools, and I think I can speak for a lot of the parents, for the Brookfords schools and the staff, that they're very concerned about the additional traffic. We've got Brookfield High School, Brookfield Middle School, Tomahawk Elementary School all right there. There's just lots of traffic all the time, and I don't think it can take any more traffic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Excuse me. My name is Andy Smith. I work, I live at 113 Parkview Drive, which is a little bit down Lockwood, and I've got a question about the traffic study. Would it be possible to put up the slide that had the main geographical layout? I don't know who's operating it.
Well, I think if you've got specific questions?
Yes.
We'll make a note of it, and then we bring those up as we do our discussions.
Okay, well.
So we'll be happy to do that. So lay out your question.
It was, it would be much easier with a drawing, if it's possible. It showed Lockwood, and it showed all of the plots of land on the left-hand side, which are currently zoned for housing. And there was a comment made about the traffic survey. There isn't enough, either traffic or housing or something, to generate a traffic survey, but has the planning commission committee looked at all of the potential traffic in that area? And if it all adds up together, is it not worth, you know? You can't just take one particular small project at a time when you've got to look at the whole picture, and I'm just asking if the planning commission has looked at the whole picture, instead of just the one conditional use permit change for this particular project? Because it involves, obviously, you know, off the road, I'm sorry. Begins with L.
All right.
No, not Laxton. Lockwood, thank you very much. With the drawing, it would have been much easier. It would have been a lot clearer.
We'll discuss that and make sure your question is addressed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Come on up, please.
I'm Nicole Thomas. I live at 1405 Lockwood. I share the traffic concerns everyone else does, so I don't need to belabor that point. But I've lived in the neighborhood approximately 11 years, so I've been there a while, and it is a lovely place. I don't think anyone here is questioning the rights of the property owner to sell the property. Nobody is questioning that. But let's be clear, this isn't for the benefit of the neighborhood. Those who profit will profit. Those who profit will profit, the rest of us do not, and such is life at times. You know, the owner had the pleasure of living in this neighborhood a good portion of her life, it seems, or a long time, enjoying a peaceful environment and the same things we're enjoying at this point, but now that she's gone, those of us left behind are not going to be afforded that same privilege. So that is one concern I have. But I also want to talk about, and I appreciate Campbell County Representative from their district talking about the schools in the area and concerns for them. I have concerns about the school district that our area would be sending our children to. All three schools, Heritage Elementary, Sandusky Middle, and Heritage High, none of those schools have met accreditation standards in years, which means they have not been able to show collectively as a school that they are able to educationally progress these students into a successful state. My concern would be each one of these homes that they're planning to build represents, if you look at the minimum, one child that feeds into the school system, we are now going to be feeding more children into a school that's already not able to meet their objectives. One school's just been outright denied for this year to be accredited. The majority have partial warnings. Heritage Elementary has been fully accredited, has not been fully accredited since 2011. Sandusky was denied accreditation completely for this school year, only met their measurable objectives once in the past six years. Heritage High, they have partial accreditation with warning this year, and only met their measurable objectives twice in the last six years. All of this is public information that you can get on each of those schools' websites. There are also links to Virginia Department of Education, which goes to a level that, should you want to explore, you could. So as a mother representing children who are about to go into that, I am very concerned, and frankly, don't want my children going there if we're going to continue to inundate them. And that's assuming the minimum of one child per household. Many exceed that. And please be clear on the language, it's not intended to be student housing. Well, of course, it's not, they're not going to intend to do that, but again, as soon as they sell the property, there's nothing protecting us from rentals and students and whomever else they choose to bring in. So I do want to express concern over that, and I really appreciate your listening to me and being able to share my opinion.
Thank you. Others opposed? Yes, sir, come on up, please.
Yes, my name is Harvey Darty. I live and own 1,200 Lockwood Drive, which is one of the five properties that are directly adjacent to this particular development. I want to iterate something that I think needs to be said here. I mean, obviously, I'm in opposition to this, and I think it's inappropriate for the neighborhood. I think the city traffic engineer's assessment that we need to widen Wood Road only up to the entrance of this is totally inadequate. We have school buses stopping at the corner of Lockwood and Wood, or Wood and Mountain View, daily to drop off students. The children have to walk to that bus stop on the roadway, they have to walk home on that roadway. The biggest traffic issue we've got, we can ignore Timberlake Road, where that's, because that's where it stems from, is people cutting through all the way up to Lockwood Drive, ignoring speed limits to turn down Woods Road to turn right onto Lockwood Drive. Personally, for our impact in here, there are many hours of the day that I can't get across Lockwood Drive. I can't even get out on Mountain View. I have to turn right and go down to Enterprise Drive, or go down and circle around the Brookville Schools to come back to Timberlake. Otherwise, I'm sitting there for a half an hour, fifteen minutes is not unrealistic, okay? So that's a safety issue I have concern about. I also have concern, not only for the security of my backyard, it's buttered up against this, but for the privacy of that backyard. I think that a shrub or a tree boundary is totally inadequate, okay, to separate my property from this development. I'm obviously worried about the degrade in real estate value, home value, that's going to happen because of this property. I also look at the fact that even their proposed of shrubs doesn't cover the two adjacent properties on Woods Road that are in all likelihood much closer to the project. My personal comment is this, I don't relish being able to sit out in my backyard and have five to six people watch out their back door to see what's going on, or me to be able to stare into their back doors and see what's happening in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Others opposed? Yes, ma'am, come on up, please.
Hello, my name is Jody McCallis, and I live at 1011 Wood Road. Our house is directly adjacent from the, what would be the opening of the complex turning in. I live in the corner property, right across from where the proposed driveway entrance is going to be. Wood Road and Mountain View Drive not only service the residents of that street, but they also are the only access for six more, Lockwood Settlement, Sublet, Principal, Court, Seven Oaks Drive, and Parkview Drive. Our front yard is being gouged already by the wheels of, when two buses try to pass there. It has been stated repeatedly, the road surface is too narrow, and to simply go from the entrance to Timberlake, it's not enough. It would have to go all the way up to the corner, and the intersection of the turn onto Mountain View would also have to be enlarged. There are no sidewalks here, and residents walk on these roads. The children come from Brookville High School, they walk down Mountain View and down Wood to go to Taco Bell in between the end of school and the beginning of their activities for the evening. And somebody else also mentioned, the cross-country team runs through our development and does their training in our quiet little community there. One very, very large concern that I have is that coming down Mountain View and taking the right onto Wood toward Timberlake, very few, very, very few people stop at that stop sign. They Hollywood-roll it and go around the corner. But if a car is coming this way up Wood Road, and this one Hollywood-rolls, there is going to be an accident there. The road is not wide enough. If there's a car sitting on Wood trying to take a left onto Mountain View, you cannot, the two cannot go at the same time. That is how small that intersection is. Another thing is, my son is visually impaired, he walks with a white cane. We have no sidewalks in that community. We have a GLTC bus stop at the Apple Market on Timberlake. We also have a GLT bus stop at the end of Mountain View on Laxton. And there is no, with increased traffic, with the, even during construction phase, with the large equipment, it is going to be very dangerous for those kids that walk those streets, and also for my son in particular. We also have another handicapped lady that has a scooter, and she rides her scooter from back Wood Road all the way to Kroger and back. And they're going to pull mud and all kinds of debris out onto that road during construction, and it's going to make it near impassable for her on her scooter to access to go and get her groceries.
Ma'am, just a few more seconds left in your time window, so if you can wrap it up, please.
All right. Yes. I think I've pretty much stated that, that we're very concerned. And I am a large equipment safety director at Liberty University, and I will tell you that their large equipment is not going to be able to make that swing out on the Wood Road without coming into my front yard and my neighbor's front yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Others opposed? Go way in the back row, sir, I think you've had yours up for a little bit, then we'll hit you next.
I've been living at 1005 since 1962, and it's been more traffic on that road than it is on Timberlake Road at times. I ask any of you men to go out there three times in a day and see if you can get in or out of Woods Road. At work time in the morning, lunchtime, and quitting time when they're heading home. You end up up at Burton Creek Garage, and that's where the closest you can get to Timberlake Road without waiting and waiting. And when you come down Timberlake Road, you have to cross four lanes of road to go into Lynchburg. And there's a sign there that says "Not the block of driveway." Well, you might as well not have it signed up there. If you do get across there, then you have two more lanes making the left turn into Timberlake Road to go to town. You might as well forget that. The light up there, excuse me, the light controls that line of traffic. And if you go up and think you're going to get out on Laxton Road, don't do that, because traffic has been backed up all the way down to my driveway, people trying to go through there and take a shortcut. But you have all that traffic coming out of Windhurst, and the people that live in the subdivisions over there. And I've lived there, like I said, since 1962. My mailbox has been knocked down five times. One car has run up in my yard. Lucky there wasn't no kids out in the yard playing there, we're in the backyard. And stuff like that goes on that road. People coming, kids coming from up at the school, walking down to Taco Bell in the evening, and they have to get over in the woods because there's no place to get off of the road. And it's a little girl lives down the road, drives a motorized wheelchair up and down that road. And my concern is for her and the people that uses that road for walking, it's no place to get off of that road. And when school buses come up there and turn onto Mountain Peak, sometimes they have to back up twice to make that turn. If a tractor and trailer, a moving van comes down, and he's going on down on Lockwood, he might as well forget that, because he can't make that turn down there. I've seen a rucker come up there and pull them out of the ditch where they tried to turn down on Lockwood. And I don't know why, it never was a traffic study done on that road. When there was an accident, it was a traffic study, but I don't know what changed between then and now. But I know the people on Woods Road are suffering from it. If you don't leave a half an hour before you have to be to work, you're late for work. And I oppose this, because, and another thing I'd like to ask a question about, the original survey plat of that land is down in Rustburg. And did anybody go down there and get the original plat when they surveyed it? Do any of you men know if they went down there and got the plat? That's where the original plat is, because it was, that land was originally in Campbell County. And now, I've been told that the survey out there is not right, that they gained more land than what was there. But I'd like for somebody to check that survey out down in Rustburg at the courthouse.
We can check, ask about that and discuss it. Thank you. Sir, you're next up, please? Yes.
Can I have the camera, please? I, my name is Roy Patterson, 105 Seven Oaks. I had sent an email before. I have, just don't want me to sign in, even though I documented the other way.
Yes, sir, please. Thank you. What's your address?
105 Seven Oaks. These are pictures taken where it comes down at Taco Bell, showing across the street. At this line here, the road was widened, I'm assuming, when it was annexed, and it's subsiding, it hasn't been able to handle the current traffic. This one, it's at right about fourteen feet, is what's stable. The other side, beyond the fourteen feet, the other, it comes to about twenty-one feet total. The other part of that is all sunk over, has many potholes in, is sliding off on the side where if it is even redone, not just to be widened, but to be redone, it needs about a third of it cut way down to the dirt, regraded, and refoundation made and done wider. So for the road, not only is it too narrow, but it's only fourteen feet of stable surface. Thank you.
Others opposed? Yes, ma'am, come on up, sign in, please.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, this is an emotionally charged issue, because these are, this is our lives that this could affect, and so you have tough decisions to make, so thank you for what you do.
Sorry, can you tell us your name, too, please?
Kelly O'Neill, and I live at 127 Oaks Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have three quick points. The first one is, you know, I'm not sure who makes these decisions, but a four o'clock meeting is very difficult for people who work. And so there could be lots of other people in our neighborhood who would have been, liked to have been here, but we have people who are working. So if that could just, in the future, think about that, because a lot other, a lot more people probably would have liked to have been here. Number two, I think it's important to make a decision, once you're able to look at all angles, and we can look at all of the paper that we want to, and you can listen to all of us talk and tell you what the problems are, but until you actually see it, I truly don't believe you can make a good decision about it. And so this gentleman was exactly right, please come to Taco Bell around 5:30 and sit there and watch, okay? And then I think you would be able to make a better decision about how this affects our neighborhood. And if you would not put this in your backyard, then please don't vote to put it in ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed? Mr. Walton, as representative of the petitioner, would you like to respond to any of these right now?
Quite a list, I'm going to do my best. One of the main concerns throughout is the traffic. And in the staff report, it even mentions or addresses the traffic there, and says that there is a great issue with the traffic, and several streets are inadequate. And I think it was worded that the traffic issues and the pavement width issues are beyond the ability of one project to fix. So, and with the recommendation from Mr. DeBerry today, there was also an email that stated that the city is also working toward a grant to apply for sidewalks in this area. Now, that is just an application, so there's no guarantee that a grant will be provided. But what that does show is that the city has a good faith effort in trying to fix some, if not all, of the issues in this area. You know, I don't think any of us can do anything about Brookville students walking or the athletic group running through or the athletic group running through the neighborhood. These are all public streets. We cannot prohibit them from utilizing those public streets. But I think with the grant issue or the grant application, the city is trying to do the best they can to mitigate that. I think if this grant goes through, it also helps with the handicapped and disabled folks that were mentioned that walk up and down the street, trying to get to the commercial area along Timberlake Road. The traffic seemed like to be the reoccurring theme, and also the character of the neighborhood seemed to be a reoccurring theme. We want to reiterate to the planning commission that these are not going to be vinyl boxes. You know, these are going to be well-made, very appealing units, larger units, not the standard 18-foot wide unit. They'll be a little bit wider. It's hopefully... The intent is to have a better tenant there, a tenant that is going to intend on owning it and not turning around and leasing the property back to someone else. There was a couple of concerns about the plan overall. One was mentioned about stormwater. We are providing for a stormwater detention pond on this site. We will address water quality and water quantity based upon city and state standards. The screening that is proposed along the R1 properties is in accordance, or the intent is to show screening in accordance with the city zoning ordinance. Between R3 developments and R1 developments, there's this pretty substantial screening requirement that is required, and that is what is intended to be shown on the upper side of the property. We did do the initial survey on this parcel a number of years ago, and not for this client, for a different client. And there was some question about whether we did research in Campbell County. I'm an engineer, and your record for this drawing, I'm not a surveyor. But knowing the reputation of our firm and the work that we do, I feel that we would have gone to Campbell County to pull those plats. I cannot attest to you 100% that we did that, but I would feel confident. More than likely, that is the source plat for a lot of the boundary work that is shown here, so I would think that that was done. I can verify that with Mr. Martin at a later date.
Just a few more comments, and we'll address all the things that you may not have gotten.
Yeah, sure. And it's... There's a lot of things that... There was a lot of things mentioned here today that are existing issues. If not everything mentioned here today are existing issues, that this project may not make better, but I don't think are going to make tremendously worse. Along the frontage of our property, we are pushing the curb back from the existing roadway. We are providing sidewalk along the frontage of this project to provide at least some assistance there with traffic. We have a taper shown going into the project, which provides a better ingress and egress for the property. So again, the intent here is not to diminish property values or be a detriment to the community. We, on the contrary, feel like that this style of unit and the product that we're going to put is going to actually fit in with the community better and provide a transition from the commercial to the single-family detached. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I think you can probably just stay up there. We didn't really have a formal group representing anyone, so we will try and address individuals as needed as we go through our discussions. So at this point, the public hearing is closed. And as we go through our discussions, before we start, I just want to mention the timing with public participation. We realize the challenge of getting to any type of public meeting. It is right... It might make sense to talk about traffic first and then talk about character and fit instead of going back and forth. If you guys are agreeable to that, maybe?
Yeah. Tom, I had a question about the city engineer's recommendation. And I know Mr. Walton said he just... They had just learned of this today, and he said he was looking at the financial implication. My understanding of the way the Virginia code is now, we cannot require them to make that a proffer. If they voluntarily make that a proffer to underwrite all or a portion of the widening of the road, we can accept that. But we certainly... If I understand the code, because I know the code has gone back and forth on this in the last couple of years, we cannot make that a requirement. Is that correct?
Well, first, don't confuse this with a rezoning. It's not a rezoning, so there are not proffers. This is a conditional use permit, and in approving... If planning commission or council chose to approve this, they can impose conditions upon it. So if you felt it was appropriate that the road needed to be widened in order for this development to occur, you could list it as a condition yourself. Now, my conversations with Mr. DeBerry were that this had been mentioned to the petitioner, but it was not listed as a requirement. It is still not being a requirement. It is a recommendation that the planning commission considered. Now, the point was made that just widening it up to the entrance of this development would not do any good for traffic conditions. That may or may not be well. But again, as stated in the report, you cannot expect one developer to come in and fix every problem that currently exists in the neighborhood. Really, what you have here is an area that already has traffic problems, but you have a development that does not meet the thresholds for a traffic study. So what you need to consider is the amount of traffic that's being generated by this development, proposed development, is going to exacerbate that condition beyond which could be permitted by right. So if you look at the number of units, that's something that you could... You should definitely consider. The numbers of units that's permitted by right, the numbers that are recommended in the future land use map, and what's being proposed. And this is actually in the middle of it.
I have two other questions, but I don't want to be the... I don't want to monopolize the questions either. The traffic study that VDOT is doing, will that get potentially to any of the... On Timberlake Road, will that get to any of the side road issues as far as widening of roads?
I have not seen the study, but I do not believe it'll go beyond Timberlake Road. I think it's primarily looking at Timberlake and Waterlet and Timberlake Road itself.
Yeah. And then one other third quick question. There was mention of a grant for sidewalks.
That has been mentioned. The city transportation engineer did indicate that they plan to file for funding primarily to build sidewalks over from Laxton Road down Mountain View to assist getting the students to and from the Taco Bell. Again, we all know how grant funding goes. That could or could not happen. Yet, it is on the... In the minds and one of the goals.
And that's a grant through VDOT as well, is it correct?
I would assume it would be through VDOT, yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Norm, could you tell us how many bedrooms these townhomes?
Three.
Each?
Yes.
Okay. It seems to me, if I were going to buy a three-bedroom townhouse, I would probably not be single. I would probably have at least one person living with me, and, I don't know, a child or so. But I don't understand, Tom, why... Is there 49, 48 units?
Forty-three proposed.
Forty-three proposed units with, I would assume, two people per unit would not generate more than 50 peak hour trips.
It's based on a manual that the city transportation engineer looks at. It's based on the type of housing and the number of units that... And that's how they come up with their trip generations.
I find that kind of squirrely. I really don't understand. I understand there's some formula, but I think the formula seems a little skewed.
I don't understand engineers either sometimes.
Okay. Well, my other... My other comment is I, too, don't agree that the developer should have to widen Wood Road, especially since that whole road is, as you've all said, pathetically narrow. It's terrible. Little road. Not the neighborhood, but the road itself. And I don't think that should be on the developer. My feeling is I think the city should fix the road before any more development goes in. But my question is, whatever happened to connectivity? I see that there is... What is that one? I don't know these roads very well. Settlement Drive that goes right up to Windhurst and doesn't quite get there. And Lockwood goes right up into somebody's backyard at Windhurst and doesn't go through. And then there's another road that Parkview Drive goes around and stops and doesn't quite attach to Beverly Hills Circle, which would take people out to Old Graves Mill Road. So there are all kinds of ways to get people out of here and diffuse the traffic snarls. But I imagine that people on both sides of the Windhurst thing must have argued not to let anybody into Windhurst or let anybody out of... Into, you know, lock... Whatever these roads are.
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you exactly what happened. When Windhurst was proposed, city staff and the petitioner had recommended that those connections be made, and the community, the neighborhoods, came in and said, "No, we don't want these connections." And as you know, city staff has been talking about recommending connectivity in the city street network for some time. And you see what happens when you do not have the connectivity. You end up having one way in and one way out, which creates traffic problems. Traffic is like water. It's going to find the path of least resistance. We've created islands in the city, is what we've done. And now there's really no way to go back and fix that because, one, the condition was placed on Windhurst not to allow the connectivity, and then, two, homes were built where the connectivity would go.
Right.
So it was by design. Not good design, but it was by design when Windhurst was done.
All right. Well, I'm all for connectivity, and I think these people are... I see no way out of this neighborhood. I mean, I see no way to solve their traffic problem, even as it is. Even a wider wood road is like... It would make it safer for pedestrians and people in cars, but it's not going to solve getting out during peak hour, so...
I mean, you're right. You widen the road, you could widen it through the entire neighborhood. You're still going to have a problem getting out of Wood Road, and you're still going to have a problem trying to make a left out on... That's Laxton, right?
Right. Or even Mountain View and getting... Yeah, Mountain View to Laxton. Yeah. You're going to have that problem anyways.
That problem exists now, and it's going to continue to exist even if you widen.
The only way I see is to take out a house. I'm sure it's probably one of your houses on Wood Road. And then cut through B Drive. I mean, you know, extend B Drive all the way out to Wood Road, and then you'd have another outlet. But I'm not trying to take down your house.
Norm, I have a question about that secondary proposal. So if you chose that, we wouldn't even be here today.
It is completely by right.
How many units and how many people would be in residence in that case?
It is 8,600,000 square foot of commercial space, 8,600 square foot of commercial space, 16 duplex unit, and 14 apartment units.
Similar number of housing?
It is.
But commercial traffic as well?
Back to the traffic study. Just to clarify, there is at least one specific question about the extent of the study. I think it's important for the audience to know that what was done is normal for this type of petition. They do focus on the immediate area of impact and those immediate intersections. Mr. Smith, you were asking specifically about this. The city does not go in... Even if this had triggered a full traffic study, it would not have gone, I don't think, Tom, addressing a lot of the broader areas that people are...
It would have looked at the amount of traffic on that road, and it would have looked at right and left turns onto Mountain View. I'm not sure how far it would have went out beyond that, but it would have definitely looked at the number of trips per day. The problem is, even if the traffic study came back, what is it going to recommend that it does?
And I think... We're all going to concede a traffic issue with or without any studies. There's no worries about that. That's there. But that was brought up as a specific question, so I just wanted to address that.
Right. I think what the gentleman was inferring was that you can't just look at one development on its own and then not consider everything else. The issue to that is that there are the thresholds that the transportation engineer uses before he requires a traffic study, and this just didn't happen to meet that.
Other traffic questions or points? I mean, I would agree, this, to me, is one of the worst bottlenecks in the city. I've seen traffic backed up to the new U-Haul place, which is 1.3 miles away. I looked at it today. And it's terrible. With or without this development, is it going to change that much? And can we... And we certainly can't put the burden on this developer, but it is a problem. And we keep adding more to it if this moves forward.
I would like to add, I acknowledge the traffic problem. I did spend a good part of yesterday lunchtime at that area. I traveled all the roads up and down, so yes, I went out there. That wasn't my first time either. I did park in a purse drive, just observed traffic coming off Laxton. Actually followed the car all the way to when they spun into Taco Bell. I reckon there was late for lunch or whatever. But one of the things I did notice on Woods Road, moving further in on Woods Road by people that live back there, it is a two-lane road, but you're driving down the middle of the road. You know, and I basically had to stop in the middle of the road so the lady coming at me was sort of like, get the idea now. She gets on her side of the road, I get on my side of the road. It is a narrow road, and we can't force that to be fixed, but you all live there. You all need to be paying attention as well of what's going on in the road there. And also looking down here on Lockview Road, you got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. 10 more potential duplexes going in there if I follow the architecture that's being laid out there, so that's...
They're single family.
Oh, they're single family? Okay. So we're still going to have more traffic coming in there as well. I don't have a solution. I mean, yes, the road needs to be widened. Your corner, I did take a hard look at that, because I remember taking a look at that from the previous thing, took a look at it. Yeah, like them two rocks there, too. I reckon they're strategically placed. If not, you need to get a few more.
And so what was the amount there, or be?
But the traffic is a bear. And then when I was leaving later in the afternoon, I had an opportunity to observe traffic. I was parked... I was stuck in traffic there, a subway there up by Brookville High School, so I could actually see on down towards Taco Bell where people were coming off Timberlake Road, cutting up Woods Road, and I could actually see them coming down Mountain View. And it was just like, wow. Not that I doubted you all, but just like, wow, that's pretty interesting. And that was not peak rush hour. That was at 3:00 in the afternoon. And there was traffic backed up there. So yes, there is a traffic problem. Mister developer, it's not on you. I think there's some city that's above us that needs to address. Sidewalks? Yeah. You're going to have a sidewalk. Sidewalk to and from nowhere, essentially. I appreciate it, but you know, we're going to have a sidewalk to and from nowhere. It's going to serve right there. And it desperately needs something there. So I've run off my mouth on that. right there. And it desperately needs something there. So I've run off my mouth on that.
Well, how about the, the character and fit in relation to the surrounding area and neighborhood?
Can you tell me the price range?
They'll be under $200,000. That's probably going to depend a lot on the final design, the final architecture layout. I think we've, we've mentioned above 150, but less than 200. And right now, we just have a range.
On, on my journey up and down Woods Road, looking at the architecture, I was trying to envision your apartments there. So I'm, I'm sorry, I just couldn't see the apartments going in there from the road. I mean, just, I, I can envision lots of things, but I just did not see that fitting in there. And then as I drove down, I saw all the other duplexes and everything. And I, I know you said you all plan on selling them, and that's fine. I looked at the duplexes, and they have three cars in front of them. And so, okay, you've got duplex, but you have three unrelated people living in a duplex. And there's absolutely nothing that's going to prevent me, as a spec letter, buying one of your townhomes, or two, or three, or four, and then renting them out to Liberty students or some other student. I'm not going to pick on Liberty, but there's absolutely nothing that's going to prevent me from doing that, because I can do that by right, which will basically put 120 cars on that strip right there.
[inaudible]
So the fit there, you know, without seeing what the architecture is going to look like, I can't tell, I can't make a decision whether, yeah, I like that, or do I like the other drawing you had. In fact, I actually liked the other drawing you had, where the duplex concept blended in more than a townhome complex. Because when you go on down the road, there's all houses, all duplexes. That makes sense to me, instead of putting up townhomes. But then again, you can actually put in more cars as well. But you know, that, that vehicle thing is not going to solve itself, no matter what you do.
Yes, exactly.
You know, one of our charges as a commission is to follow the city's comprehensive plan and the future land use map as much as possible. And I think we generally do a good job doing that. But I also looked at this region, and you do look at the character of the area. And there's nothing like this proposal there. And if you, after leaving that area, I went and looked at Google Earth and kept zooming back, and still didn't find anything that matched this. So I do feel like this is an example of where the fit is not right. It just doesn't match what's there. And I, and I do agree with others who have stated that homeowners have a, have a right to expect what they bought into. And changing after the fact is, is not good stewardship.
I'm going to vote against the, the conditional use permit. And I know Mr. Walton always does a very professional job. I think he's an honest broker of information when he comes here. He, you know, I've always been impressed with your previous proposals. My head tells me, because I am sort of a pro-development type of person, you know, my head tells me to vote in favor of this. And my, my head tells me I'm very sympathetic to the lady whose family owns the property, because I think you've come forth with a good faith project. And I'm not going to go through all of the reasons that are going to, that are going to explain why I'm not ultimately going to vote for this in, in favor of the recommendation. But I, I will say, my, my head may, would potentially change if the road problems were addressed. If, and I think that's the responsibility of the city. I don't think it's the, as we talked about, the responsibility to developers, certainly, because it's not your problem, really. But if the, if the road and traffic issues were addressed in a bigger fashion, and if the sidewalk issues were addressed in a manner that was appropriate for the community, I may be inclined at some time in the future to, to make a recommendation on a different basis. But, you know, this is the kind of situation that makes people cynical about government, quite candidly. You know, we've got a roomful of folks here who, one of the ladies said, this is their life. This is probably the single most important asset in their life. And the only thing they're asking is that government not enable a process that's going to detrimentally affect them. Not asking for a favor or anything else, they're just saying, don't hurt me. And when government does things that hurt people, people tend to get cynical about government. So I think the safety issues and some of the character issues that we discussed have been persuasive enough, in my mind, at least at this point, to recommend to city council on my vote that it not, that it not be done. With one final word of caution, folks, you better watch out what you ask for. And I don't know what the reaction of, of the, the property owners, and, and I'm sure Mr. Walton will have some, some input with, obviously his client on this. What may happen if this proposal doesn't go forward is you may like less what by right they have a, a right to go forward with. And I'll leave that up to you all's decision-making process. But it, it may be that the law of unintended consequences, you're, you're more upset with what they may do as a matter of right.
I'm very conflicted. I, I think this property, the highest and best use is what you have come up with. I mean, I, I do agree with that. I, I do think there's going to be some devalue of the property on Lockwood, the houses that butt up to it. It, it will affect the value, and, and I struggle with that. There's obviously a traffic issue that is, is there. It has nothing to do with this development, but this development certainly wouldn't, wouldn't affect it positively whatsoever. And it, and it more than likely would, would affect it negatively. I, I'm very, I'm very conflicted. And, and the roomful of people on this, I'm new on the commission, this is the first time I've seen this many people come out and speak. And I think as, as a planning commission member, we, we need to follow, you know, the, the, the plan of the city. And, but in the same breath, we need to listen to, listen to the, the community and what the people, how the people may, it'll affect them. So I'm not, I'm really not sure. I'm very conflicted.
Norm, your runoff, does all the runoff on that site run into a retention pond? Is it all captured, or is there an issue with?
Wood, Wood Road is the high side of that property, and the property falls as we're looking at it from left to right. We have the detention pond at the back of that five-unit building, you know, on the right side of the property. So every, every, every drop of water off of the parking lot and the rooftops gets captured and goes to that detention pond.
I, I also intend to vote against it. I second Cham's sentiments, especially in that I would much prefer this to your other option. I think the other option would be horrible. Just, I don't mind the, the housing part of the other option, but I can't see putting business units. That's what you had planned, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It's sort of an odd thing to go through a housing development and then get to some kind of business units. That seems like a strange plan to me. And I wouldn't want to see that happen. But I think, in, in my opinion, until the city can solve the traffic problems, I wouldn't want to see another 100 peak. I, I'm going with my gut, saying they're going to be at least 100 peak hour trips per day coming out of this thing, not just 50. And I wouldn't want to see that happen until the traffic problem can be solved. And it may, might not be able to be solved. In which case, you put four or five nice big houses in there, and that's what you get. You don't get as much money out of the land, but it's better than nothing.
Would you like to offer any final thoughts, just to kind of wrap up our discussions?
I agree with Ms. Johnson. I, I do think this is the best use of this property. Getting the four or five houses here is very difficult. You're not going to build road infrastructure to get four or five houses there. The road frontage off of Wood Road may allow you to get two houses. It's roughly four and a half acres with the, with the, with the, you know, the, the way the, the original house is broken off of the main piece and the narrow frontage of the property, it's, it's going to be difficult to develop. I think Mrs. Kiger did an excellent job in expressing her sentiment as a property owner who has kept this property undeveloped for numerous years, has paid taxes to the city, and, and really for no benefit of herself, but rather for the community. And now she desires to move on. And the only way that this property is going to get sold, I believe, in this area, in the market that this property is in, is for it to be developed similar to what we have shown here. The other, Cham, I understand your situation, but does the improvements in infrastructure get driven by development, or does development drive the improvements to infrastructure? And that's always the argument, you know, what comes first, it's a chicken or the egg kind of thing. So, but I understand what you're saying. The roads are inadequate there. And they've been adequate in that community for some time. So, you know, if we approve this, this gets built, this is force the hand for something to get done quicker and better. So, anyway.
Great, thank you.
You know, I, I look at, I just, like you, I'm a little conflicted, because I, I do see that kind of development on the other side of the road, you know, really, really close, almost across the street. And, and just down a block and a half or so, a lot of that's been developed like that. So my question is, you know, do we, you know, it's like trying to put a, a jet engine on a wagon. You know, is that what we're trying to do? We're trying to put something in that just doesn't fit simply because it can't be handled? And do we make that judgment? You know, because I think it is the best use. I think, I think that, I, I really don't think the secondary one is realistic, because I don't think the commercial sites would be developed. I don't think it would happen. But at the same time, something else could, that is, that is just as bad, that people would look at. And I also, I get a little frustrated, like you, with the connectivity issue, that a lot of these things that come up that we hear, you know, a lot of it is us as a community actually trying to keep connectivity from happening, and then this happens. And this road is really bad. I've been, I've been there five times, sat, driven three times and sat twice. And really, the only way to solve that ingress egress is only allow right-hand turns in and out on both roads. And then you can never get into Lynchburg. So this is a totally landlocked. And I, I'm sure you all might like being landlocked, but, you know, it's a real issue that, that it's going to come back and bite the homeowners either way. So I think that's one of the things that makes it difficult for me. I, I would lean towards supporting it more than being against it, except for the, the infrastructure. I, I actually, when I went down there, they were pouring cement, and I had to go around in somebody, it isn't someone's yard. Most of the areas that we think of as our yards isn't our yard, it's right of way. And I went into somebody's area to get around a cement truck. So, you know, we'd like, right across the road. So I know that there's, there's some issue. I'm not, I don't, to me, I don't think that as a planning commission, we should be voting, though, based on current construction or the construction debris. It's really what it's done afterwards. It would be nice to see pictures of this facility when completed, because I think that would help then inform us as to really what this is. You know, I look at some of these townhouses, and no, I don't want those townhouses in my neighborhood. But I've looked at other townhouses in other places that I'd say, that would be nice in my neighborhood. And, you know, there's a lot of R3 around it. And, and that's, that's subject to change. People who, who feel strongly about it now eventually will sell, and then they'll want to actually be able to turn their property possibly into something like that as well. So that's my two cents.
Well, before we vote, since we have such a large group, I want to remind the public that we are just making a recommendation to city council. So you'll get to do this again if you choose in front of council. And also, we do have other business, which we invite you to stay for, but if you choose to leave, please do so quickly and quietly, so we can continue. So at this point, do we have a motion?
I'll move to deny the petition.
And I'll second it.
So just to clarify, if you vote in favor, you are voting against the petition?
So an "aye" vote is to oppose the petition?
Yes.
Ayes, no.
Ayes, no. All right. So all in favor of opposing the petition? Aye. You need hands, Robin, or do you?
Yeah, that would be good. So we have five ayes?
And one against it.
And one against it. So we are, we are recommending against the petition to city council. So thank you all very much for attending. We appreciate your input. We appreciate the, the work done by the petitioner.
Thank you.
And, and good luck to both sides with counsel.
Me, I'll do.
Okay. Tom, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Members of planning commission, the Code of Virginia and your bylaws require that you elect officers at your first meeting of the year by consensus. At the last meeting, the commission decided not to conduct those elections, because there were some members missing. Your bylaws and the Code of Virginia state that the officers of the commission will be the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. Your bylaws also indicate that the city planner will continue to serve as the secretary. So what's before you this, this evening is to elect a chair. And the duties of the chair is to preside at all meetings, to be the official representative of the commission, appoint committees, and so forth. And the, the, now I can talk a little bit quiet. And the duties of the vice chair are to take over those duties when the chair is not able to fulfill those or request that the vice chair do that. So at this time, I will ask for nominations from the floor for the position of chair.
I'll nominate Dave Perrault.
I'll have a second.
Can we not, can we nominate Bob?
You could. So there's been a nomination of Mr. Perrault for chair. Were there any others, Bob?
No, no, I'm not nominating Bob.
No.
Okay. I'm assuming you accept that nomination?
Yeah, I, I, before we vote, I am fine with that. It's, it's not much extra work than just attending. And folks have been very good about filling in when I've been absent. So as long as you all are comfortable with it, and city staff, I'm, I'm fine with it, too. So.
You did a great job running the meeting.
So, all right, well, thanks.
If there's no other nominations from the floor, then the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mr. Perrault continuing as chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Are there any nominations from the floor for the position of vice chair?
I'll return the favor and I'll be Cham.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue to do that, but I would like to make a couple editorial comments. Dave and my terms both expire at the end of next year. And it would be nice for the vice chair, this coming year, to be, there'll probably be a meeting or two that Dave isn't here. And it would be nice for the vice chair to have some experience in running the meeting with the expectation that I'm not going to be around after 2019 anyway. So my, my editorial comment would be, if somebody who has longer time on the commission, and Nancy's term is up at, at 2019, I think, also.
You guys.
You can be reappointed.
Yeah.
No, but I've already been, I've already been appointed once. We can only be reappointed twice.
You can be reappointed three times.
Nine years total.
Three.
Sorry, Cham.
Sorry.
Well.
Now, if you, if you finish someone's unexpired term, you can only finish that person's unexpired term, which I think you did, didn't you, Cham? And you did. So you finished that person's unexpired term, and then you can do two more.
Well, my point still, you know, my point still is, if, if someone else would, would like to be vice chair, so you'd have the, the experience of running the meeting, I'm more than happy not to so serve. But on the other hand, if no one wants to do it, I'm happy to continue to serve. It's really completely up to you all.
I have no problem, and I have, when you all
All right, so the nominations for vice chair are Mark Lowe and Tom Rogers. How would you like to do this? Would you like to do it by ballot, or would you like to do it by a show of hands?
Just put our head on our table.
I think we need to do it by ballot.
Give me some paper.
The tribe has been. Well, you know, sometimes I think you do a wonderful job. And I think professors and people in law that deal with people do a very good job.
And I don't think anyone's voting against anyone. We'd be happy with either one.
There's only one pen on this side, so we're all sharing a pen.
Do you have another pen?
I will need another, ma'am.
Here.
Thank you.
Those have to be Queens University.
Use the pen if anybody needs it.
This is probably the funnest thing you do, isn't it? These elections.
Robin, did we fix, while that's being done, the issues with emails? Have folks been able to identify or talk with the IT folks to make sure their emails are being, city emails are being forwarded?
They have told me that they really can't manage emails, because they need you to do the, there should be a way for you to.
Yes, there is a way. And I called IT, I followed IT up, and he walked me through it, he stayed on the phone with me.
Okay.
And I was able to do that, so I get two copies of every email.
Okay.
So it does work.
I've gotten no copies.
Yeah, I didn't realize that until recently, that I thought they were automatically forwarding them. Now, I know when I, you know, send something, it goes to both of yours, because I have you all together in a group. I could talk to IT and find out what the procedure is and get back to you guys.
And if they say, "Have the person call," that's fine, too.
Yeah. That was something fairly new. They used to do it for me, but then they said, "We don't want to get into the business of managing people."
No, mine used to, and then there was some shift, and it has stopped doing that.
Yeah. It would have been nice if they had told me that they were going to stop being in the business of handling and forwarding of emails. I'm sorry.
Mr. Rogers, congratulations. You're the new vice chair of the planning commission. So with that, is there a recommendation for myself to continue as the secretary to the planning commission?
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying "aye."
"Aye."
Any opposed? Great, congratulations to me.
And you're by the next round, right?
Yeah. Here's some water. All right.
Any other items, new or old?
Well, I raised this after the last meeting, and I think I copied everybody on the email, just as a new business item, and I don't want to belabor it, but there was some confusion, I think, the last, at the last meeting. Some of us had evidently gotten, you know, some people had sent, some of the concerned citizens had sent some of us emails. It was unclear whether they had sent all of the emails to all of us. Some of them had sent them to Robin, and we've already discussed how that's another issue. But, you know, I would just say that any time, maybe just out of consideration and the instance of transparency, that we respond, you know, when we've been individually contacted, that maybe we just make certain that we get our response out to every, to all the other commissioners.
Well, did we all hear from Herschel Keller about the, did everybody get an email from Herschel Keller, the lawyer for Presbyterian?
Okay, that's not on your agenda. Can't talk about it.
You can't, we can't talk about it.
Not on your agenda.
Well, okay, well, it's just an example of.
So what's important is if the commission decides that if you get emails concerning something, and if you want to forward it on to other commission members and staff as a courtesy, that would be a good idea. What my point was at the last meeting is, since you are appointed by council, you are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. And the petitioner requested a copy of the email. You are obligated to provide those emails to anyone requesting them, and it is your responsibility to maintain those emails. So for, to make it easier on you, it would be better just to forward it to us, so Robin can maintain those emails.
That's fine.
Do you want to remind them that they can't discuss?
And can I see in the, right, and nobody else, and I just need to make sure I forward it to Robin.
The other thing is, is that if you start discussing it by email, that is a meeting, and no more than two of you can discuss anything, or that becomes a meeting. So, very good.
All right, so just a matter of just sharing, sharing the info without going into it.
All right.
I think that's the sound strategy regardless. All right, anything else? Motion adjourned?
I'm just confused. If we start sharing emails back and forth, but not commenting on them, I guess it's just information from other people, so.
Yeah, you're just sharing that I got an email from a citizen. You're sharing it, but you're not discussing it, so it doesn't become.
But if Dave and I discuss something, then that just has to stay between Dave and me.
Two of you can.
Two or more. So that's two.
Oh, so two people makes a meeting?
Well, you can't have a discussion unless there's two people.
That's the point. That's the point.
You mean, I can't talk to one person?
You should not meet together and discuss city business. That's a meeting. Two or more.
Oh, I don't know.
More than two.
I'm pretty sure it's two or more.
So I can't have a conversation with any of these guys about anything?
I'll validate.
Christmas party.
Oh, about Christmas party, which you decided not to have, which I was very.
No, I don't, I actually, I thought it was three or more as well.
Yeah, I thought, I thought one-on-ones.
We'll send you, we'll send you the Freedom of Information Act, okay?
And I.
Maybe it's church that says two or more.
Yeah.
Gathered in his name.
That's actually in the Bible.
I'm almost positive, Tom, on other public boards that I'm on, I think as long as it's a one-on-one, we're okay, but you just can't get that third person involved.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, because I've been with Jerry, and I've.
Hey, you go check that out by default, as soon as I say, "Hey, you, you, you." So for clarification, then, would it be best if I received the email, I respond back, "Thank you, I'm forwarding this to the planning commission to disseminate to all the other commissioners?"
Yep.
Okay. And just send it back to you.
Yeah. I'll keep it in the file, and I'll keep it, you know.
Well, I'll just issue the email, forward it to all the other.
Yeah.
If less than three.
If less than three of the constituent membership, wherever hell, with or without management, whether, not to have any problem. All right, so meeting or meetings means the meetings, including work sessions, when sitting physically or through telephonic or video equipment pursuant to 2.23708, 3708.1, as a body or entity, or as an informal assemblage of one, as many as three members, or a quorum if less than three. So three, okay.
So, yeah, we're fine to.
Okay, neither the gathering of employees of a public body, nor the gathering or attendance of two or more members of a public body at any place of function where no part of the purpose of such gathering or attendance is a discussion or transaction of public business. Okay, so three. So I stand corrected on that, but not the Bible.
That is two or more.
A question, parking permits. I'm using one, and it's expired.
I will get this for you. They like to, I don't know why. Parking's starting to get hard on the streets.
Like, give it to you one year at a time.
Well, Robin pointed out, they stop, and I'm probably jinxing myself for getting a ticket today, at a certain time, like 5:00.
Yeah.
They stop checking, street parking.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I mean, it's the streets, not.
Yeah, as long as you get into at least a two-hour, if you got into a one-hour, you could run the risk of getting a ticket if they, if you parked at 3:30 and they're still giving out tickets at 4:30, which they have, they have been known to do. So find at least a two-hour spot, but I'll also get you, yeah, I'll also get you your permit, your parking permits.
All right, last question. What's the progress on that downtown? Because I think we thought we were going to see, start, maybe see something or hear about it in January?
Yeah, the staff review generated so many comments, we had to back off of that a little bit, so we're looking at the April-May timeframe.
Supportive comments?
Yeah, very good. I mean, to make the document better, we're going to release it, probably sometime in February. And all that being said, I'm not promoting religion over anything.
Just to wait for that.
That is.
All right, motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor?
All right, thank you. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.
Good.